Okay, I will call the Board of Trustees here for the Village of Cambridge, the meeting, to order, and we'll get started here with a roll call, please.
Trustee Hollenbeck.
Here.
Brineig.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Cunningham. Whitworth.
Yep.
Cumbier.
Here.
McNally.
Here.
All right. I ask you to cite your pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Moving on. Proof of posting, Lisa?
The agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, the Hometown Bank, Cambridge Post Office, and the Village website.
All right. Let's see that we have three individuals who are not normally here, but I have a feeling it's all on village business and it's in the agenda, so we can wait. All right. Okay, moving on. Approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion necessary? All right.
Looks good. I like the font. The switch of font, it looks good.
Okay.
It's all about the font.
All right, all those in...
It's the little things.
All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Carries. Okay, we also have, coming up here, President's Report. I've got a couple of items here. One, I attended recently the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, a meeting that was their annual meeting, so I went to that. And first thing up was I met with the Village President of McFarland. His name is Brad "The Botar." He wants to talk, and I've asked Lisa, this is the individual, I know what it's about, and it has to deal with our senior outreach program, because McFarland is the party that's really picking that up, and they're strongly hinting that we're going to have to do something this year. We were $21,000 in the red, and this is the second individual. So Lisa, if you don't mind, you and I will have to make some time to go over and see them, or have them come over here and see us and talk with them further.
I think we need to understand we have other options besides going with McFarland. So there, we don't have to use McFarland, and there are other options that might be available to us to combine with other areas to have, to provide the same level of service to our seniors.
Okay.
Bob Saleoff has had a couple conversations, or has had a conversation with me about that.
All right.
So we can get his opinions and...
I will see...
After you talk to McFarland.
Yeah, I will see Bob on Thursday. I could ask him and find out what he's thinking, you know, before we go into the meeting, so... Okay, the other items that were covered, there's nothing urgent right now, but there was WEDA and affordable housing, and now they have what's called workplace housing. And I'm just thinking, we may have a piece of property that if we get this cleaned up, we might have, you know, a situation where we could be putting up some kind of housing. I just want to see what programs are out there. And then the other item that came out of this, schools, and how the schools are working with local communities across the state, and internships and banners and, you know, bringing people back. And so there's some ideas in there. I want to bounce those off of our school superintendent. So those are the main things that I got out of it. I did meet with Jenny Dye. She's Policy Director for Tony Evers. She wants to sit down and just talk. And then I also had a chance to chat up with the Mayor of Jefferson and the Mayor of Milton, so communities that were in the area. That is pretty much my report. There is another item, it came in late last night, but it's on the agenda, so I'll wait. Okay, moving on. Library Board.
We met, standard business. We have a position open at the library, so we talked about that position, and making sure that gets posted in the paper and things like that. And I think that's really about it.
Okay, all right. Water and sewer.
We met on August 20th, and the thing we talked about is the upcoming treatment of wells two and three. Other than that, there wasn't much going on.
And the policy for Dancing Goat.
What is that?
The policy for Dancing Goat.
Little bit, I guess we did discuss that a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the sewers.
Where they, well, they'll get a credit for the invoices that they can prove. They haul up so many gallons of water.
Right, right. Do we, we don't need to talk about that here, do we?
No.
No, 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 no.
No, but it was approved.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. And then, moving on. Village Office Updates.
And I apologize, I left my notes upstairs. Been a busy two weeks. We moved into the new offices, or we got the new phone system in, computers were moved over, furniture, it's all put together in place, so huge thank you to the guys that came in the day before they were coming to do the computers and phones, so they all came over and helped get everything ready. So we're in, still a big process of moving everything over, but we are in there working. The letters and the questionnaire went to the state for the annexation. We did receive a response yesterday that I will be sending out to everyone, so that will be on our next agenda. Working with Quarles and Brady and Ellers on the bond issue, which is on the agenda tonight, finishing up the audit stuff with Paul. That will be at our next meeting. The audit will be presented. Barb and I both went last week to the Wisconsin Municipal Purposes Association Annual Conference, which was held in Middleton. I had gone Monday evening. I was a, on the committee for the conference. So I went out Monday, she came out Tuesday evening. Great classes, we kind of divided and conquered. We had a couple different classes on elections. I did a tabletop exercise. There were demonstrations of the new electronic poll books, which will be coming down the pike. A great class, Homeland Security was there, giving us their involvement in elections and security and so forth. Classes on cybersecurity, maximizing funding opportunities, dementia-friendly training, white-collar crime, cybersecurity, so a lot of good, good things. The Board for the State Association met after the conference on Friday. Barb was appointed to a committee on legislation, tying in with her role on the Federal Election Commission. I was also asked to chair a committee on promotions, and also to sit on their Policy and Manuals Committee. So that was a busy week. Trying to think what else I all had on there. We did get the policy together for the Dancing Goat. That was approved at the Water and Sewer Meeting. Water, Town, and Country on that. My notes, that's all I can think of, but it's been a busy two weeks. Barb is gone this week. Her son is getting married on Friday, so she's off this week.
Questions? Lisa, what are the plans for evaluations, personnel evaluations?
We'll be getting there this summer. What I'll have is the directors of each department do their staff, and then share them with me, and then I will do the remaining.
Because the summer's pretty much over with, so the fall.
Yeah, but there's been a lot of big things on the list that...
I understand.
Yeah, but we will get them done.
All right, so the plan is to get those, what, by September, October, or 30th, something like that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. We get to the issue now of bills. You've got $58,507.99 that you would like to pay, so...
I'll make a motion to pay the bills and set them out.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Is there any discussion necessary? I think we're going to have a roll call.
That's fantastic.
I'll just keep that...
As a reminder, Chris Butt.
Roll us.
All righty. Roll call, please.
Trustee Brineig.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cunningham. Whitworth.
Yes.
Cumbier.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes.
So Mr. McNally had a birthday, so happy birthday, Mark.
Thank you. Thank you. I knew that was for my birthday.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, all right. Moving on.
Can I make a motion to move item 9A to current?
Uh...
Just because I think it's going to take us a little longer to do the bond, and that way...
Sure.
That way Catherine can get on her way.
All right.
We could do 9B as well.
Oh, 9A and 9B?
Yeah.
Make a motion to move 9A and 9B to current?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A vote, okay, go ahead. We would like to hear from Ms. Catherine Rogers about the street use permit and for a Halloween parade.
All right.
I recognize this dynamic duo. They were here a year ago. Hello. So can you please introduce yourself and speak into the microphone so that we get to know who you are?
My name is Catherine Rogers.
And I'm her mom, Dusty Rogers.
All right. And ladies, why are you here?
Because we want to organize another Halloween parade for this year, because it was a really big hit last year, and we had at least 100 kids show up.
All right. Okay. And where would this parade start and finish?
It would take place in Veterans Park, and for the toddlers, it's not really that long, so you just walk around, like, the park. And then if the kids want to, they can trick-or-treat up and down Main Street from the businesses.
Okay. All right. And Dusty, you're in total support of this?
Yeah, yeah, we did it last year. We had no idea what to expect as far as how many people were going to show up, and we were really overwhelmed by how many people came, and Kate just...
Hundred to 300.
We don't even know. She just said, "They keep coming and coming," so it was a really big hit. And we've gotten a lot of feedback sense about people wanting to see it continue, so...
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the street use permit application for Catherine Rogers to hold a Halloween parade.
I will second.
All right. Any discussion necessary before we vote? We're not going to vote on this. Okay, all those in favor of the motion that has just been made regarding approval of the street use permit, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Your motion has been approved. It has carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Well done. We'll look forward to seeing a wonderful parade again.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for what...
We are also planning to add a trunk-or-treat for the condos nearby who want to come and just, like, do trick-or-treating out of their trunks and stuff.
Okay.
Who's idea was that?
All right.
Ms. Paula?
Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you. Oh, did we need to talk about crossing guards?
Yeah.
Okay, that was one question we had. We didn't know if that came here, or if that was something we did on our own. There were so many people last year, the only thing we heard that people would like to see different between last year and this year would be just some kind of volunteer crossing guards a couple points along Main Street, because we ended up having so many kids.
Okay. What time is this?
I was going to say, if you want to organize that, I think that's perfectly fine.
Okay.
Yep, I don't think there's any issues.
No.
You know, you're not going to permanently stop traffic across 12 or 18.
No.
You're just going to, you're just going to pause people so people can cross. I think that's successful.
Right, great.
What time of the day are you talking about the closing this off?
Be about 10:00 AM.
Okay. The school may have those crossing guard uniforms, so there might be a place to go to, to get one, if you need one.
I know that. They have those stop signs, too.
Yeah. Sounds great.
Okay.
Kate knows those people.
I do. I know, like, all of them.
Okay, good.
All right.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. All right. Okay, we're going to move on now to the Chamber of Commerce request to place a welcome to the Cambridge sign on village property.
That's pretty much it.
Karen.
Are we here on village property? Is it going to go?
Sorry, on 12 and 18, on the, what we thought was the vineyard property, but is not. It's a section that's still owned by the village, so it's very close to where the Parade of Home signs were, more in the middle of that section. I have no idea what the map designation is for that area.
And I'm in the process of finding...
Yeah, we have to find out...
Certified survey map.
In order for us to put a sign there per the DOT, we have to find out if that has a certified survey map. And Lisa said, "Why don't we ask for permission while we're going through the process of finding out if there's a map for that little slice?" If that's okay. If there is, if you guys approve the sign, and it has a certified survey map, we can then apply to the DOT to place the sign.
I'll make a motion to approve the placement of the "Welcome to Cambridge" sign on village property.
I'll second.
All right. Lisa, can you think of anything that we have missed, as long as we're going to get deals in this?
No, we did talk a little bit down the line. You know, we kept those parcels of land in case we wanted to add businesses or something there, so at that time, you know, we could look at relocating if and when we ever develop there, but...
Okay. Bruce?
Do we know what the sign's going to look like?
Yes. It says, "Welcome to Cambridge and Lake Ripley Area," and it looks just like all the signage that's been made. It's being made by the same company even.
Okay.
So it looks like everything you guys have already put up for the village. And I do have drawings. I can send them to Lisa.
Were they lit up at all?
No.
At night? No? Okay.
No, that's a whole other...
Yeah.
...log game that I don't have time to tackle.
And placement will be back far enough so it doesn't impede vision as...
Yeah, it has to be by DOT.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the placement of the sign here on village property. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Looks like you have approval for...
Great, thank you.
...the sign placement. Thank you very much, Karen.
Thanks for coming in.
All right. Now we're going to jump back into unfinished business, and we're putting out some notes here in the amount of $1,140,000 general obligation notes. Lisa, what can you tell us about this before we...
Well, it did come down some. Brian is here from Ellers, and the sale was today, so he will, at your desk, give a report, and he will go over this.
So you guys should all have packets, sale day packets, as our logo, and also as your logo. On it. My name's Brian Raymer with Ellers. Been in front of you guys a few times, I think most recently, a couple months ago, when there was some TED Talks. So, but if you don't know me, my name's Brian Raymer. We were selling just over $1 million of general obligation promissory notes. The main purpose for this was the, some water improvements, some community center improvements, and then some refunding, given where interest rates are. So that said, we sold those notes today. You can tell by the difference between the number on the agenda and the number on the front page here that it was, it was a good result. So I'll get into that now. Moving to the second page, where it has kind of some summary statistics at the top. It says, "Sale Day Report, August 27, 2019." So went through that purpose. We had three bids, pretty typical of issuances of these size. This is what you want to see, is at least three bids. The winning bid went to Bankers Bank out of Madison. For your information, that was actually the same underwriter who was awarded the 2018 GEO bonds. So, good news, they still got great interest. It's good to have three bidders as well, like I said, so continued good news there. Most importantly, we did sell this competitively, so that's having underwriters bid against each other, and you can kind of see what the benefit of that is when you look at the comparison from lowest to highest bid. It says, "Trueness is cost as bid." You'll see the low bid, just under 2%. That was Bankers Bank. And then the high bid, just over 2%, but that, that interest difference is really the advantage of selling competitively, when you have them bid against each other and not know what the other one is doing. You realize an interest difference there of seven, just over $77,500. So underneath that, kind of the summary of the sale results, and I'll just, the better detail to look at in terms of the sale, I think, is on the preceding pages, so I won't get in too much detail here on those specific numbers until later. But also, in the notes section, it's important to note that Associated Trust Company is your paying agent. They've been the paying agent on all the other issues, so kind of status quo there. The notes do have a call feature, which is good, so it kind of gives you that financial flexibility, should you in the future, like you did here, see that, okay, well, we have an opportunity to refund this at a lower cost to us. Certainly you have that flexibility later on. So that is the notes maturing April 1 of 2028, and they're callable April 1 of 2027 or any time thereafter. So it'd actually be the last two maturities, and you'll see that here on the tables following. So with that being said, I'll go to some of the next pages. On the next page, you'll see this Bid tab that is essentially showing the detail of all the bidders and who bid on it. So that shows Bankers Bank and their winning bid. I'll kind of let you peruse that at your leisure, and certainly if you have any questions, reach out to Lisa. She can get in contact with us, or reach out to us directly. On the next page, which is Table 1, is a look at your, what we call base case, that's your existing debt, less any other sources of revenue outside of the levy. Then that shows what the tax levy is responsible for in that net tax levy column. Then it looks at your equalized value to kind of see what your tax rate is just on debt. This is tax rate just on debt. And therefore, this is, this is what was happening prior to today, so before we sold the bonds. You can look at this tax rate, and we have a table that'll kind of show you where you're at now after selling it, but this is kind of the starting point of where we were at, and then we'll show you kind of where you got to by, at the end of the sale. So on the next page, Table 2, is a, is a look at the sources and uses of funding, and where all the money was needed, and where all the money came from. But essentially, you have the pre-sale, what was shown to you at last month's meeting, and then versus the sale results and the difference therein on the right. So you can see at the bottom, the difference between the pre-sale to the sale, we were able to downsize by about $75,000, and the majority of that is due to the re-offering premium. What that is, is essentially there, the debt service that you're paying on it, or the interest that you're paying on it, is higher than actually what they're going to resell it on, so they pay you a premium to be able to do that, and therefore, you're able to downsize this issue. The reason we did the downsizing, you can also apply it strictly to debt service, but the downsizing is, overall, it saved you money on the refunding. In addition, it still brought about lower debt service, looking at the pre-sale to, you know, kind of the expected results to the actual sale results. So it kept us in line with the main goals that we had in, in bringing this refunding effort to the village, and then it also brought about some extra savings on the refunding as well. So just kind of a look at the difference there from pre-sale to sale. So beyond that, there's, there's nothing really on Table 2 that I wanted to discuss further. Table 3 is a lot to look at. I'm not going to walk through this, but essentially, it's, it's, you know, what, what each purpose is for the repayments on the bonds, so you can kind of see there's the new money piece, where you have your community center improvements, and then the water system improvements. Then you also have what the purposes were for the refunding. So your sewer previously was paying a portion of these, your water was paying a portion, and you also had a portion that the levy was responsible for. So this is showing kind of what each purpose is, so you can use this as a roadmap as you look to see where those funds should be coming from, levy versus other sources. So with that, though, it's kind of a detailed table, so a lot of small numbers, but certainly valuable information, like I said, providing that roadmap into the future. On the next page, Table 4, this is a look at strictly the savings in the refunding. So we're looking at on the left, or the orange columns, the current existing debt that you had outstanding that we, we are going to be refunding, and then the debt service thereafter. So this is showing what you're saving on an annual basis by doing this undertaking. Overall, just over $100,000 in savings, so really, really good results. I think, you know, that should leave the village in a good place moving into the future, should there be other capital needs to borrow for, or certainly if that money can be applied to operations or somewhere, you know, therein the budget. But this is kind of a, a year-to-year look. You'll see some plus years, some minus years, strictly due to the maturities. And then also, you may see that, you know, hey, these maturities do look a little funky on the refunding or the gray side, and that's mainly because there are some new money portion of this as well, where you have to understand, we're trying to accomplish two things at once. So certainly, the main goal is getting those savings on the refunding, secondarily, giving you the money to pay for those community center improvements and the water system improvements. So all in all, if you want to look at the total debt service that you're responsible for, that was on the previous page, this is strictly showing you what your savings are on the refunding. So on the next page, this is just a complete wrap-up of, from that base case discussion that we had, looking at what the effect is on the tax rate. So that said, very detailed page, the, the orange section here on Table 5 is simply a remake of that first page in the base case, but now with that, those debt issues that are no longer part of the village taken out, and then the green section is adding in the new debt, and on the gray here, on the way right, you can see the levy and tax rate. So that's your total net debt service that the levy's responsible for. Where you see the less columns, where it's, you know, the red numbers or the subtractions, those are your abatements. Those are where you're asking other sources of revenue to make these payments on the debt, so it's not affecting the levy. That said, you know, you'll notice if you were to open up your pre-sale reports that you had, we have a similar levy change from prior years, in that it's only going up ever so slightly, and that we're really on the back end realizing that savings, or giving you that more room for, like I said, future, future issuances, other operating needs. Certainly, it gives you that flexibility on the back end, and once again, you know, you can see the call feature there, boxed in red in the middle of the page, is just kind of the identifier as to where you might be able to restructure some of this into the future. The last page, then, is Table 6, and that is a look at your GEO debt capacity. So, state of Wisconsin holds you to 5% of your equalized value. This is an understanding, looking at it where you were, and then now where you are after this issue. So not much change, obviously, due to the refunding, saving you some money, where you're going to see some increase, is only due to there's a new money portion of this in the community center, or money needed, and the water system improvements that were needed. So that was about $300,000, so that's why you see the, the slight increase from your existing to now after this, this debt issuance that was sold today. So all in all, still in a very good position. We, we tend to start to have those more serious conversations once you're at 75% of your debt limit, so certainly, you know, being at just under 60, and that, that goes down rather quickly here in the next couple of years to under 50%, you're definitely in a good position. You can see the residual capacity. You can see the residual capacity, then, on the way right there as well, to give you an idea, hey, if we got another road project or something coming up, what is that going to do to us? So, you know, all in all, I'll take questions now, if you have them on these individual tables, but certainly, as well, you know, we can answer questions as you have time to digest this. You know, unfortunately, we don't get the numbers until the sale happens, so the pre-sales, you know, a good barometer of where we were, the overall good news is you save money based on the pre-sale estimates, so even better news than was shown previously. That being said, before I cut myself off, there's an authorizing resolution that Corals and Brady prepared, and then, so those, a few documents to sign there, but what I do need to walk out with tonight is the bid form, which goes back to the underwriter, so if the authorizing resolution is passed, I'll, I'll ask that President McNally, you sign that and hand that over to Lisa, so she can attest, and then I can walk out with that. But I'll take your questions now, before we discuss the resolution, certainly.
I'm actually really excited about the outcome. I think, I think, I don't know that we could have asked for a better outcome, so I'm, I'm, and I think overall, for, for the village, it's a very good thing for the village, so.
I would agree.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you have any, do you get feedback from like these institutions, Baird and Bankers Bank, as far as why they valued it at this?
It's, it's all, the, the feedback is the numbers that they present, to be quite honest. Really, what you're looking at is, you can compare it to similar sales, but to be quite honest, there just hasn't been that much paper in terms of Wisconsin communities as well. However, we are seeing, very, very recently, in least the communities that we serve, there, these refundings happening quite a bit, because given the interest rate market being so low, and the premiums that a lot of these underwriters are offering, it certainly is a great time to be refunding, so the feedback, you know, I would say, is, is in the numbers, if you're looking for something else specifically, you know, I, we could possibly reach out to them, but I, you know, beyond that, it's, it's more bore itself out in the numbers when you compare it to other competitive sales that have happened recently, and seeing where their bids are, but Bankers is aggressive in this specifically region, geographically, so this was kind of expected, on, you know, just from our personal thoughts, Greg and I.
Well, we certainly appreciate a seventy thousand dollar savings from what we had for pre-issuance authorization. Okay, any other questions?
Let me make a motion.
Please.
I'll make a motion to approve Cambridge Resolution 201908, a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of approximately of, of one million seventy thousand general obligation promissory notes, series 2019A.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, I'll ask this one for sure. Any discussion?
Do you have anything to add?
Okay, roll call.
Rusty Christensen.
Yes.
Cunningham. Whitmer.
Yes.
Humber.
Yes.
Hallenbeck.
Yes.
Brian Egg.
Yes.
And McNally. Yes. All right. Brian, what else did you need then?
So that bid form.
I need to sign something.
This one, this one.
Nope.
The big sticker.
The sticker that says sign here.
Yeah.
Up there, say.
It didn't.
Does it matter? Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm excited, even though we brought on a little more debt and saved the village some money.
It's a lot of money.
I'm pretty excited about that. That doesn't happen all the time.
Sure, I'll slide into our bottom finance.
All righty. Again, Brian, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
It was good work there, and we appreciate that. Okay. Let Lisa sit down here.
Yep. Wonderful, thank you, Brian.
Okay. Lisa, you all right?
Yep.
Okay, let's move on now to the rental of the Amundson Community Centers-based CART. Kristus was yours, Lisa, I think you may have some information.
Yeah, I did pass out a memo, too.
You did? Yeah, I, I just, I asked Lisa and staff to confer with the other village staff, and see what their space needs were, and Lisa came up with that.
Yeah, so Gary said he's good in his space. The courts, when I talked to them, they would like to have additional space. When the old library space was open, they were meeting upstairs, they liked having it close to the office. In talking to Carol, she would, she would like to see them take over all of our old space, have the offices in the outer area, in the court, in the back area. That way, one, it's close proximity, but they also have capabilities to print things and so forth during court as needed. Down here, they can't do that. So she said they would like additional space. The police do have offices both here and in Deerfield, currently, most of the evidence and stuff gets taken over there because they have more room. If they had the opportunity for more room here, yes, they would use it, it's not a necessity. The one thing that they did express support of was having all village services on the one floor. Couple other things that have come up when we were talking to CART, that we hadn't talked much about at this level, was the need to re-key the Amundson Center if we're renting out to private, because they'd only have access to the front door and that office. Also, in meeting with them, they expressed that as landlords, they would expect us to replace the carpeting and paint the, the space before they would move in. So those were a couple of things that were brought up when we met with CART. I had, after we met with CART, contacted Mary Bailey, she was going to start working on this. Unfortunately, her father-in-law passed away, so it has been put on hold, she has not started working on a draft lease as of yet.
All right. I can come in here with a look, comment. Late, late last evening, I received a phone call from Tom Watson, and CART would, at this time, like to rescind the offer, their, their interest in renting here. So I'm passing that on to the board, but I did hear from Tom Watson, so.
Did you describe why?
We talked about it, and, you know, I explained that we were still talking it over, I mean, we're trying to get a rental amount, and so there was that. I explained that I knew that we had a logistical issue here, in terms of other courts and our police, law enforcement possibly needing the space. The other concern that I did briefly mention to him is that they're open one day a week, and with them being there one day a week, there may be people that are coming in, and, you know, they're, they're not going to be there, and so then it becomes something where village staff are going to have to answer questions, and these folks aren't around. So Tom just, you know, just said, I think this is, we're better off where we're at, they've got a good space. Wolf, Mr. Wolf takes good care of them there, they've gotten used to it, they don't have to go through any of the maintenance, the carpet and keys and all that, they'll just stay where they're at. So, they have taken this off the tip, the desktop for us. I don't know if there's anything further than that's required.
Not at this point.
Yeah, all right. Okay, moving on, special counsel for the Oakland-Cambridge Intergovernmental Agreement. Paul Kent, what can you tell us there, Lisa?
As you know, Connie Anderson has helped us up to this point, submitting to the state and so forth, as she is retired, she said that was the extent that she wanted to, to be involved. She did recommend Anderson and, or Paul Kent, who had been her partner in Anderson and Kent, they had both moved over to Stafford, Rosenbaum. Paul is also the one helping us on the Melster site, so he is working with us now. She has been in contact with him and briefed him somewhat on where we were at. Currently, on the case-by-case, when we need their assistance, it's roughly about a three hundred dollar in our charge for him, not for his, his staff, but his, his is about three hundred. So, as we talked about at the previous meetings, wanting to get somebody in place, so if we do move forward and need to do anything else, we have someone we can go to and step in and help us right away.
All right. And we did get a letter from the state here.
Yep, and I will be sending that to all of you. I didn't get a chance today, I forwarded, it came in yesterday, so I don't undiscuss it much now, it's not on the agenda, but I will be forwarding, and we will put that on the next agenda.
Okay.
So, do you think we should, we should auth, the board should today authorize a set amount of money for Paul in case we need him, or do you think we can take care of that in the future?
I think we can take care of that in the future.
Okay, great.
But I want to have it on the record that, yes, we can go to him in case something comes up, and we don't want to wait two, two weeks until the next meeting, so.
Okay.
At this point, we don't know what the next steps will be, or if we'll need assistance, but if we do, to have somebody on record.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then, for selection of Paul Kent as our counsel regarding the intergovernmental agreement and our matters with the town of Oakland.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval of Paul Kent as our agent to assist us with the intergovernmental agreement with the town of Oakland, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'm hearing that, the motion is carried. Moving on, we have, hopefully, a good report here, Dane County, and what can you tell us about what is going on with the Sustainability Leader Collaborative Program?
So, all of you were invited to attend Sustainability Leaders Collaborative Meeting on August 15th, was that the, what's that?
Cordially.
Yeah, well, you got the email, I saw your name on the list. I just so happened to work right next door, so I figured I would go and see what it was about, not necessarily representing Cambridge, but just showing that, you know, Cambridge is interested in hearing what they have to say. It was held by Joe Perisi and the Madison Mayor Satya Rhodes Conway, and the gist of it is Madison wants to become more of a regional influence, and Dane County is on board with that idea of trying to take more care of what we do that impacts the environment, and they're looking for different projects that we can collaborate on, that would improve the sustainability of Dane County as a whole. There were representatives from 25 or 26 different communities, in fact, even Deerfield, the president of Deerfield was there. Went over different topics, it was about a two-hour meeting, we talked about how Madison has greening of their fleet, different technologies they're using to make their fleet more efficient, more cost-effective, the different solar projects they're working on, energy efficiency projects. If you ever go into Madison on 1218, you'll see the landfill, they have this new concentrated natural gas system, they, they're lucky in which they have their fleet operations across the street, so all of their trucks can run off of this fuel that they produce themselves. And they were looking for projects that people were either currently working on or would want to work on, and wanted to give an opportunity for all the communities in Dane County to interact with each other, and say, well, this is how we did this, and how did you overcome that, and different things of that nature. I did sign up for a couple of the different working groups, just to put, you know, to get more information, one of which was the water, water group. There's been problems with flooding, obviously, in Dane County.
Yep.
Water tables are at historic highs, and we have, in our community, have been lucky, we haven't had to deal extensively with flooding, but I do know we have our own water issues that we have to main, you know, look into. One thing I wanted to propose would be some sort of sustainability committee for the Town of Middleton has one, and it is a combination, it's kind of like our plan commission, where there are citizen members, there are board members, and they go so far as to even have people from the school, student from the school, to have a voice in where money is spent. So there are some projects that we could do that wouldn't cost money, which is ideal, we don't have money to spend, but we also all breathe the same air, so we have a, a good incentive to work together with the neighboring communities.
Is there grant incentives out there for this program?
There, there, Dane County wants to find programs that we can work together on.
Okay.
I don't know if that relates to money or not.
Okay.
But since I wasn't representing, formally representing Cambridge, I didn't want to speak on behalf of Cambridge, I didn't feel comfortable talking money with people I don't even know.
I hear you.
One thing I did find interesting, I talked with the Deerfield president shortly after the meeting, because we share a police force, and one thing that he and I agreed would be a good idea for us to look into would be anti-idling technology, where when the squad car is sitting still, the motor shuts off, and it runs off of auxiliary power. So I know we just recently bought a new squad car, there, you could, if you felt like it, buy a retrofit kit and, you know, have that installed, there's a cost with that, or we can wait until the next time come around.
And they'll have those retrofit kits?
We could include it as part of our bid.
Yeah.
I was looking online at them today, the average savings is about 4% fuel savings, that's the average, there's some people way better than that, some not as good, but cost of fuel, wear and tear on the vehicle, we're already replacing these vehicles often enough. And to boot, it's good for the environment because it's not running. Actually, on the way here tonight, I went past a ambulance that was idling while they were inside working on the patients, they have the technology that even the ambulance could be shut off while it's sitting there. I grew up in the city of South Milwaukee, there were anti-idling ordinances in place there, no one ever followed them because it's winter and you got to start your car, but for these situations where it's, the police officer's sitting in his car just typing, he doesn't really need to be running the motor, so there's small things like that.
What does that technology cost?
Don't know.
I know my BMW has it, probably yours does too, but you probably turn it off, don't you, Mark?
My daughter's Chevy has it.
I know, I love it, I love the, I love it. My husband shuts it off when he drives, but I turn it back on.
Madison is moving towards hybrid vehicles for their cop cars. They have sufficient power and performance that they're looking for, they also save on fuel, save the environment as well. And one other thing I wanted to bring up was Deerfield has a company that is working to solarize their whole downtown, and one question I asked was, how could the village get on board with something like?
Probably yours does too, but you probably turn it off, don't you, Mark?
My daughter Chevy has it.
I know, I love it. I love the, I love it. My husband shuts it off when he drives, but I turn it back on.
Madison is moving towards hybrid vehicles for their cop cars.
Yeah.
They have sufficient power and performance that they're looking for. They also save on fuel, save the environment as well. And one other thing I wanted to bring up was Deerfield has a company that is working to solarize their whole downtown. And one question I asked was, how could the village get on board with something like that, with these green technologies that wouldn't cost us money? And whether that be having solar on the village properties? Or, one idea that I was given was, the village would facilitate as, we wouldn't buy the solar panels, but we would act as the facilitator to get a large quantity of solar panels, which then could be purchased by the community.
Got it.
And, you know, we wouldn't put any money into it, it's just we would be acting as that unify, the go-between, right? We have the clout to say that, you know, all the businesses downtown, I'm sure they would like to offset their costs.
They have to tie into a grid.
Yeah.
I'd be really, I would, I personally would be really interested in that. So as a, as a citizen, I would, if that was something that the, that the village sort of promoted or sponsored, having them come and talk to us and say, you know, here's, I would absolutely attend something like that as, as, as just a regular.
I guess I would too, because I've got a huge rough area that we could put them on. It's just one of those things you can do.
Yep.
Cool.
I even saw some places down in Texas where they put windmills on top of their water tower to offset the cost of running the pumps for the water tower.
And I don't know why we don't see more windmills being proposed, especially up by the power plant, because it is windy up there most of the time. Maybe it's not windy enough, I don't know.
I don't know. One thing that, when I, when I look through these bills each month, I see the, the cost of utilities to pay for those pumps to run, water well, especially running right through the center of town is this wonderful creek. And there's technology out there that can harness that power flow of the river, and it does not impact the flow of the water, but it can offset the cost of running that pump to pump that water, or putting solar panels on the roof of that pump house. Just some ideas, I would just like to see more community input on where money is spent. Sometimes we see these bids, and if we include in this as, you know, our objectives, we don't have any yet right now, we would like to become more environmentally friendly, then that would be a considering factor when we look at bids, whether they go over the bid or in the bid.
Well, the same thing down at COWC, we've got a large area where we could put solar panels and try to offset the energy costs every, because they are high.
Yep.
That's right.
Eric, as you look at everything that was discussed, what you've learned, are there any low-hanging fruits that we could aspire to pick?
I would say first and foremost, benchmarking studies of how much energy each of these buildings use, this building, library building, the facilities building, how much energy they're using currently. And then, once you can figure out where your baseline is, then you can start figuring out where you can save money without spending money.
Okay.
Light bulbs and things like that.
Yeah, we did that last year with.
The Duke was, Duke was big on making sure we replaced the light bulbs for the streets, the street lamps.
I remember that.
But can the street lamps be converted with a solar panel that can possibly.
How long has lights been replaced downtown?
Be installed.
So if you had a committee that was, that was their job to think of things like this and just advise the board of where community members would like to see more spent? Maybe people want us to push more for, we had a gentleman in here last time, one in, bigger recycle bins.
Michael, yep. Smaller, yeah, bigger recycle, smaller garbage.
Smaller garbage, bigger recycling.
Exactly, yep.
Maybe you can think about that, and we can talk more, and then see if there's a way of putting together a committee.
Sure, I didn't know.
And actually create a proposal, and yeah, I think that'd be good. I would be, I mean, I think that would be great for the village, and, and I think there would probably be enough village interest that, that I think there are people in the village who would be very committed to this, and I think it's, it would be a good thing for the village.
And businesses.
Yep, and businesses.
Well, I was reading our growth plan, and they say that my demographic does not stick around in town. So anything you do to appeal to my generation, which sustainability.
Yep.
Okay, all right. We'll, we can talk, bring that to the next meeting, see if we have a committee. All righty, thank you, Eric.
Thank you, that was really informative.
Correspondence?
No.
Nothing. All right. Meeting announcements, I'll just read these off very quickly. September 9th, planning, this commission is going to meet. September 10th, joint law enforcement. Audit and Finance will be meeting on the 10th. And then we also have a village board meeting that same night. September 11th, library board. September 17th, water and sewer. And then finally, another village board meeting on September 24th. You have a question? Go ahead.
Lisa, for the September 10th, that's going to be a pretty busy day. Can I get some times? Because I'm part of both of those committees, and I may have to miss one or go to another.
Yeah, I'm assuming, yeah, we'll try to start Audit and Finance a little earlier.
Okay.
Yep, you are on the joint law enforcement too, so.
And I'm going to be gone on September 10th.
Oh, you're gone on September 10th, okay.
Yep.
And you're on joint law enforcement too.
And Sue.
And Sue.
Sue.
Okay. Okay.
So those, we don't have any specific times yet?
No. Joint law enforcement's usually 5:30. We could see if that could get pushed back a little to 5:45, 6 o'clock.
Yeah.
Because it usually doesn't take more than half hour.
It usually takes long.
So I will check with them.
All right, thank you.
What time is the audit?
I don't have it for sure. I think we're thinking 5:00 o'clock or.
Okay.
Just to give us enough time, I will double-check with Paul, there a time?
No, I mean, if, if, if we, if it helped, I mean, I could, I can personally meet as early as 4:30.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
So just keep that in mind. Yeah, because I'm, I've already planned my day to make sure I'm here that.
Okay. I will check with Paul and with Deerfield, and then.
Well, we will have a rep there, so I mean, if Audit and Finance goes a little longer.
Yeah.
I can get all the paraphernalia that I need from, the police commission from Sue.
Okay. Any questions, referrals to staff for future agenda items?
I got one to bring up. Our fine motel out there on the, out there on the corner, it seems that we're, it's now an RV parking lot. And I don't know where they get the right hand, but they also sell lawnmowers, which we knew.
It's private, it's a private, it's a private parking lot. We can't tell them what they can put in their parking lot and not park in their parking lot, Ted, unfortunately. Unfortunately. If it's a licensed vehicle. As long as it's licensed.
Okay, then the second one is Pleasant and PQ. There's a whole bunch of vehicles being parked there. There's four of them out on the road that don't move. That's the lady that runs a little business, because I walk past it quite a few times every day and.
On Pleasant and PQ?
What is our ordinance, Lisa, on motorhomes?
There's one right now that is not licensed for this year.
Okay, on Pleasant and PQ?
Yeah, and there's another one that the car's sitting up there like that, so I think the springs are broken.
On the street or in the?
On the street.
On the street, there is ordinances, they have to be moved every. I thought 40 hours. Forty-four, 48 hours.
Maybe.
But they have to be licensed too.
There's one that's not.
Okay, we can have the police just take a look and keep an eye on that.
And then they could just tick the other tires to see if they're.
And I will double-check the RV ordinances.
I know Planning Commission is working on this, and they're.
What's frustrating?
Yeah.
Well, people can't even go, ladies can't even get in a parking place at the beauty shop up there because that RV is.
And that's another good one that, well, it's private property though.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't talk too much, it's not on the agenda, but.
But then maybe we should take a look at ordinances that maybe we need to revise.
And Planning Commission is.
Okay.
They're supposed to be coming back with some suggestions, but just as an aside, I was surprised on Planning Commission, the one person who was more cautious about doing ordinances was the owner of the cooler, whose business is there indirectly affected.
Wow.
But, because we have to be careful what ordinances we pass, realizing they affect everyone. We cannot.
Yeah, they can choose.
Yeah. And so she was more cautious than anyone, and she is the one most directly affected by. So, but they will be coming back with some recommendations.
But that particular product, project, or the property on Pleasant Street, there'll be nine or 10 vehicles there every night.
I'll let the police know and make sure they're being moved and licensed.
Yeah. Well, some of them are parked on the, on their property, but the ones on the street, I'm concerned about.
Chris?
Lisa, I'd like to put on for a future agenda item, a personnel meeting, so we can discuss evaluations.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, I'll.